Welcome, everybody, to the May 16, 2017 Board of Selectmen's meeting. A little bit after 6:30, we're going to go into executive session to start, discuss strategy with regard to dispatch contract grievance and to review BOS executive session minutes of 1-6, 2015, 3:31, 2016, 4:5, 2016, 4:12, 2016, 9:20, 2016, 12:13, 2016, and 12:27, 2016, for approval and possibly release. When we come out of executive session, I'll read the regular agenda at that time.
Move to, uh, move into executive session?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Doc?
Mark, yes?
Welcome back, everybody, to, uh, the May 16, 2017 Selectmen's meeting. We're running a little bit behind. I apologize for that. Um, I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, we'll have citizens' input. 7:05, Jessineus George Bell, public hearing, NPS LLC, Monster Jam, um, January 2017. No, Monster Jam 2017. Uh-oh, I think I need glasses. Um, 7:15, Senate vacancy, notification of Senate vacancy. 7:25, former Senator James Timmeltie, citation for former Senator James Timmeltie. 7:35, Selectmen's update. 7:45, Town Manager's update. 7:55, Assistant Town Manager's update. We have a bunch of action items, and then we'll adjourn back into executive session after the regular session. Uh, Bill, will you listen to, uh, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. 7:25, anybody here for citizens' input? Nope. Couldn't attract anybody tonight. Um, 7:05, Jess? George?
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Arch, Chapter 140, Section 181, 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough Revised General Bylaws, Chapter 227, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 16, 2017, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for Monster Jam 2017. Event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jessineus with Gillette Stadium. I'm here before you this evening to apply for our fourth Monster Jam. This is actually the fourth year that we're hosting it at the stadium. We started in 2014. It's the fifth event that we're hosting with Feld Entertainment. We hosted both Monster Jam and their Supercross event, um, last year. So, we're requesting Saturday, June 10th. Um, the event, uh, the official event start time is 7:00 PM, but part of this event is an interactive fan experience in the parking lot. Um, it's called their Party in the Pits. It opens at 1:30. It, uh, one of the biggest pieces, um, of this event for Feld Entertainment is accessibility. It's something that they sort of built their whole, that this particular brand on, and, uh, so the Party in the Pits is an opportunity for patrons who have purchased tickets to the event to come into the pit party and, um, meet their favorite riders, take pictures with the trucks. There's food and beverage sales. There's merchandise sales. Um, it's a level of accessibility that they're, that they pride themselves on, that they provide, and, and this is, um, the same event that we've hosted in the past, so we've, we've always had this 1:30, um, pit party timing. We are requi, so then stadium gates open at 5:30, and the event officially begins at 7:00 PM. It runs for two hours. It's a highly coordinated event, so with the exception of any accidents, there's, there's no reason that it stops and it runs two hours exactly. Um, the sales are a little bit slower than they have been in the past, which I guess is, is kind of on par for this event. Fans tend to age out. It's cyclical. Um, so, right now, we're anticipating 20,000 people in the building. The stadium, the entire lower bowl is open, the East Club is open, and the 200 level mezzanine on the east side is open. So, uh, no west side at all, or no west club or mezz, and no 300 level at all, so all relegated to the east side, and the mezz and the club, and the balance of the 100 level. They'll continue to have, um, as in previous years, they kill the first 10 rows. They wrap them with safety barriers so that patrons can't come within 10 rows of the field. It's, it's obviously for, um, for safety purposes. And we are still on the, the same dirt. So, the dirt trucking process begins, well, they officially begin to load in the Monday before, and then on Tuesday, the, the trucking comes into the venue, um, and they start laying down the dirt. It's, it's still across P-10. Um, it's in the, I believe it's Lot 52 or 53, truck it into the venue, and then truck it out immediately following. So, there's, um, there, there's no, there are no changes to, um, Monster Jam 2017. It is the exact same event that we've had at the venue three years before.
Questions from the board?
I have none.
No.
The only thing I see is just it coincides with Founder's Day, but...
Mm-hmm.
You can do both if you ca, if you create.
Can you send a monster truck down, uh, Main Street?
I'll get everybody's attention.
Drum up business.
I know. That would be fantastic, but moving them isn't as easy as you'd think.
No.
Carry Gronk with the trophy.
I know. That's great.
That would be a sight.
I just had a question about, there were a, a couple of insurance, um, endorsements. Did that, has that been run by MIA? M-I-A? Is, or...
This is, this is the, this is the standard insurance that we've provided in the past, and they, and they, they're required to have this.
Okay.
Uh, so, there's no, there's no issue with that.
Okay. And, and also, um, I know George wants to speak to it. They had the, um, what does it say? After the event, autograph alleys will be set up in concourse level, where drivers will sign autographs around 11:15 PM. That's strictly signing. It's no, there won't be a noise factor or anything.
No.
Did you do that in the past?
We have, yeah.
Okay. And there'd been no...
Nope.
No problems?
We, no, we haven't had any issues. They begin loading out immediately, and while they're loading out, um, the autograph alleys take place, and people queue up and, and wait in line, and that's it. There's no, no noise on the field. There's no production. There's no in-bowl audio. Um, the event itself is quiet, and then it's just fans having that last opportunity to get an autograph.
Okay. And you'll still have the hotline on?
Mm-hmm. Yep. We've, uh, there'll be members of the Statement Advisory Committee.
Midnight, or is, you know, how long's the hotline gonna be on, open till?
And they group, they typically are on-site depending on how the event ends and how it loads out. So, it's not a set time. It's always with at least an hour post-event, um, that they'll, that the hotline will still be available, and then obviously the stadium reception is always there as well. So, if somebody has a...
We're available. The hot, as long as the, the phone calls come into the stadium's hotline number.
Yeah.
So, we're not at that line. We receive, uh, the call once they get, you know, if there's a call. So, as long as they're there, you know, we have accessibility.
Well, that's, that was my question, because the, um, the, um, autograph thing ends at 11:15, but people will still be leaving the...
Correct.
The parking lots.
So, we'll be available until 11:15.
Okay. Right.
Well, beyond 11:15, actually.
Right. And, and, you know, from our perspective, noise is a, the, these are serious vehicles, and you hear 'em through the area, and, uh, so it's, it's, it's good that it's, then again, it's been there before, and it, it ends at nine o'clock. So, the noise from the, the revving of the trucks is over at 9:05.
Well, I'm not worried about the trucks. I'm actually worried about the people who stay for the autographs and then are really into it, and then peel out of the, uh, parking lot at 11:15.
It's mostly, it's mostly families with young kids.
Yeah, it's mostly, mostly young groups.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that there's gonna be the...
Yep, there's...
Well, it is. It really is. Yeah.
Good point, Jenny. We're, we will be covering it, or available to hear.
George, anything else to add?
No. The fire department, uh, the chief is on top of the, the special fuel they use and making sure it's safe, and, uh, you know, again, we talked about Founder's Day, and they, uh, said that there were no issues. Um, and, you know, once it's done, they're not gonna take, uh, break the, uh, break it down until the next day, so, from that perspective, right, once it's over, it's over.
Yeah. They, they begin to load out immediately.
Uh, move to approve the app...
Public hearing. Anybody in the audience have anything to say?
Yep. I had a down pat, too. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the application for, uh, um, NPS LLC Monster Jam 2017.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Notification of Senate vacancy.
I'm sorry. I took a mistake or something. The citation of the vacancy.
Mark needs to read that.
Yeah. There you go.
I can't read it.
Alrighty. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the inhabitants of the Town of Foxborough, uh, in the Bristol and Norfolk Senatorial District, whereas by the 24th Article of the Amendments of the Constitution, it is provided that any vacancy in the Senate shall be filled by election by the people of the unrepresented district upon the order of a majority of the Senate elected, and whereas by reasons of the resignation of James E. Timmeltie, heretofore sitting as Senator from the Bristol and Norfolk Senatorial District, a vacancy exists in the Senate, and said district is unrepresented therein, and whereas a majority of Senators elected have, by their order, directed the President of the Senate to issue a precedent appointing, a precept appointing a time for an election to fill said vacancy. Now therefore, I, Stanley C. Rosenberg, President of the Senate, by virtue and in pursuance of the aforementioned order, do hereby direct and require you, in the manner and forms prescribed by our Constitution and laws, to notify and summon the inhabitants of the said Bristol and Norfolk Senatorial District, qualified to vote for Senators, to give in their votes on Tuesday, the 17th day of October, 2017, for a Senator to fill said vacancy, and all in matters pertaining to said election and the returns thereof to take similar proceedings as in an original election. Witness my hand and the seal of the Senate, heretofore fixed at Boston this fourth day of May in the year 2017, and the 241st of the Independence of the United States. Steve Rosenberg, President of the Senate. That was a lot harder than what we would think.
Okay. Good job, Doc. So, consider ourselves so notified?
Do what you want.
Okay.
Take a look at that. It's hard.
We do have here, uh, official citations from the board, um, in recognition of Senator, Senator Timmeltie. Uh, I'll read into the record. Um, "The Board of Selectmen on the recognition of commitment to public service commends Senator James E. Timmeltie for the many years of representing Foxborough as a state senator. Recognition is given to James E. Timmeltie for his selfless dedication to public service in the State Senate for the past 13 years. Elected in 2004, Senator Timothy, Senator Timmeltie has served nearly five terms in office representing residents of Bristol and Norfolk Counties. He has served on numerous committees, including Joint Committee on Public Health, Ways and Means Committee, Joint Committee on Environment, Natural Resources and Agriculture, Vice Chair of Joint Committee on Consumer Protection and Professional Licenseur, Chair of Joint Committee on Public Service, and Chair of the Joint Committee on Public Safety and Homeland Security. Because of his dedication to public service and loyalty to his constituents, Senator Jim Timmeltie has deservedly received numerous accolades, including the American Red Cross of Eastern Massachusetts, 2013 Public Servant of the Year, Massachusetts Coalition Police Legislator of the Year Award, Healthcare for Alls Healthcare Access Hero Award, Massachusetts League of Environmental Voters Budget Hero Award, and was named one of 2012's Great Eight Legislators by the Massachusetts Restaurant and Business Alliance. We wish to commend your dedication and devotion to Bristol and Norfolk Counties, and wish you all the best as you venture on a new career opportunity while continuing your work for the people of Norfolk County." The citation is given under the seal of the Town of Foxborough on this eighth day of May, 2017. Board of Selectmen, David S. Feldman, Chairman, Christopher P. Mitchell, Vice Chair, Mark Elfman, Clerk, James J. DeVellis, Virginia M. Coppola. So, congratulations, Senator Timmeltie. Um, you are always welcome to Founder's Day, coming in at the last minute as the parade's starting. But...
We could always count on him for doing that. He'd jump into the line.
Um, from a, from a personal standpoint, before I ran for, for Selectmen, um, I did reach out to Senator Timmeltie, and he, he gave me some, uh, pretty good advice, so, I'll, I'll always be thankful for that, so, congratulations.
We'll make sure that gets in his hands.
And he was invited tonight, but because of his transition, and the schedule was so crazy.
So, we recognize that was, obviously, well, a lot of commitments for tonight in conflict.
Almost back on schedule. Um, Selectmen's update. Anybody have anything wanna, wanna share?
Uh, just to remind people that the J.C.'s work very hard. They've got the, they have Spring Fling Fair, Spring Fair, uh, tomorrow. I'm sorry, tomorrow. Today's Tuesday.
Saturday.
Saturday. Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 at the Common. Rain day being Sunday, but Monica Fizley had emailed me that she doesn't expect it to rain, so...
I don't know.
And that they've got 100, over 100 vendors coming. Thanks for the kids, um, soup to nuts out there, so if you're interested in coming out to the Common to support the J.C.'s, uh, they're a great organization, so, this Saturday.
Good. Should be fun. Um, I do wanna make mention, uh, some, some of the board is aware, some, some may not be aware, but Chief Baker has, um, made a recommendation to, um, you know, the, the senior tradition of driving around the Common, and, and families get to, you know, halt signs and everything. Um, you know, Chief Baker, always looking out for public safety, is, is, is looking to work with the, um, the school department, um, to try and make it a little bit safer. Nobody wants, nobody wants to see anything bad happen, but we still wanna continue the dr- tradition. It's a good tradition, but, um, I know, Jim, you, you work downtown, and it gets, gets a little, gets a little crazy at the Common at that time, and I hope, um, having a son that's a, a senior this year, um, just don't want anything bad to happen. You want, um, want, you want him to experience the tradition... Right. ...but in a controlled environment, so, like, like, you know, whatever support we can give Chief Baker, I think, I think we're all, uh, all on board for that.
Just to add to that, that he's reached out to the school department. He's been working with them, as well as the, in the school administration, to try and, uh, come up with a plan, which, um, I think, like, does make a lot of good sense, and they are gonna discuss it with the senior class to, to make sure they're on board about it, so, um, yeah, it, it's precisely for that reason, just to make sure it's safe and everybody's protected during that event, because he recognized that the tradition's important, and, and people wanna continue with the tradition, but to make sure that it doesn't get to a point where we, we have a, a situation that we don't wanna see happen.
Yep. I think it's, I think it's, uh, a wise undertaking. So... Anything else? Anybody? Bill?
So, um, just a couple things. The, the town building is moving along great. Um, we've had, um, an update. I met with the contractor this past week, uh, and I sent out a, a communication to the employees and to the board to indicate that, that we are moving ahead on schedule. The, uh, we hope to be in the building, uh, middle of June, maybe even earlier, depending upon how things pan out. Um, a lot of things become very schedule-dependent at this very late hour in the process, because, um, things may not come in on time, that type of things, or something gets delayed for weather-related type of thing. Um, they appear to be staying with the schedule this week, although they, they did plan to pave a portion of the parking lot this week, put the binder coat down. That was done on Monday, even despite the rain, so they were able to get that done. And, uh, this week, we, we, we hope to see the pillars come in this week, which will actually wrap around the, the posts in the front of the building, which will really start to really set the building off a little bit. But we've, uh, brought several of the employees in to take a look, um, and now the furniture's actually in the offices, so they're, that's why they really get excited about that, so we want to start letting people see, see the real space, and their real working spaces. So, um, everybody, the rea, the reaction from folks is very, very positive, and, um, I think it's very, very well done, and, um, it's, it's clearly a, a project that I think the entire town will be proud of, and we're very, 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 very appreciative from the taxpayers, uh, from all that has been involved in this project, to, uh, construction, to the, to the town meeting, to, for the opportunity to be able to do this, and, and to open this new facility for the town. So, we're moving ahead on that, and, uh, we hope to be, uh, sticking, uh, sticking to the schedule at this point, and hopefully it'll be in, uh, sometime in June, as, as plans go forward.
Question. Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Once you guys are fully in there, and operating out of Town Hall, they'll obviously be demolishing the other Town Hall. Will residents be able to pull in and park in front of the, the new Town Hall, or are they gonna have to park elsewhere and walk over?
They may likely during, during, there's gonna be a period of time where there'll be some level of disruption around the town, the existing Town Hall. Uh, the, the demolition's gonna take about three weeks. Um, it, to knock the building down's not gonna, gonna take that long, but the way they're doing it, they're actually doing it, they're recycling the materials, and they're doing it in a way that makes the most sense to do it. Um, but it does take a little longer to do it that way, so, um, there, there will be a disruption in parking, um, to be determined. We haven't finalized that plan yet, but we will be, uh, communicating that as soon as we know it. But I just wanna let people know that parking in around the, the Town Hall has, has been a challenge since the construction started. It will continue to be a challenge until the new parking lot is completely finished. That's why I'm not recommending to this board that you, you start your meetings until the parking lot is fully completed, and that, um, and that you, you, you start broadcasting from there, uh, sometime, or probably sometime in August. I think, uh, July or August, uh, perhaps a late meeting in August. So, uh, a late meeting in Ju, July, rather. So, we'll see. We'll see how, how it proceeds.
I also have another question through the chair. Um, I've got a couple of questions about the facade of the new building.
True.
And that's, um, and it's remarkable, be, from a bunch of different people...
Yeah.
...that if you look at the artist's rendering, the stonework is white, which I think is gorgeous.
Yeah.
But you look at the stonework now, it's the more natural color.
Right.
Is, 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 they're just a, a difference in what was reality versus the artist's rendering, or somewhere along the line, the stone gonna be whitewashed, or...
No, I, I think that the stone, the, the stone is to try to replicate the stone that's actually in Memorial Hall, so, which you, you notice is actually, uh, a little, little different shade and dark, darker, and eventually it will turn to that state, that, that color eventually, but right now, when you do a rendering, they tend to come out a little bit lighter, and then, uh, but it will, it will be a little bit darker when it's, when it's, uh, when it's finished.
Okay.
So...
We'll tell you, to get an actual 100% detailed view on a rendering, it'll never happen. You always, you always lose some of the color, uh, through print, and it's through, um, through the computer-generated, uh, program, how those colors are interpreted, interpreted. So, believe me, I, I struggle with that a lot, doing renderings and, and making presentations, and the interior designer doesn't like the color, well, that's the color you gave us, you know, but it's, it just, it just, um, translates differently on paper than it does, um, in real life, so...
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, I just wanted to, um, provide the board a, a rendering, which has been provided to me by the, the new developer, Forbes Crossing, relative to the, uh, project, uh, a, a part of the project which I had asked him to do is, in, in developing Forbes Crossing, which, which will effectively kick off an initiative which, um, I'm hoping will, will take, you know, take some real root in the community, and that's called the, uh, the Gateway, Gateway Foxborough Sign Program. So, uh, this is the, a rendering of, of the new Foxborough, Welcome to Foxborough sign that the developer is donating, that's part of the Forbes Crossing project, which will be located right near the, the Mansfield Line.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, it's difficult to determine where you're at, when you're actually in Foxborough, or you're in, or in Mansfield. This will actually help, help determine that.
Beautiful.
So, uh, we're gonna see if we can use this as a prototype, and then locate it in various locations throughout the community, and, and all the gateways into the community, so people will actually know we're actually in Foxborough.
Will it be installed on 140?
It will be installed right on, right off of 140. It'll be located right on, right on the side of the road, right near the entrance to Forbes Crossing. Going into, uh, right on 140, yes.
Interesting. We just had the discussion on renderings. That blue looks like a little off.
I don't think the sky would be that color blue.
So, he did, he did capture the blue gold, which is the, the high school colors, so I think it's kinda nice to be able to do that, so...
When are they gonna do the roundabout?
The roundabout's scheduled to be done, so, we're just waiting. The only thing that's holding us up right now is, is the district office. Um, they're ready to, uh, everything's done. We're ready to, ready to start the work, and I think we'll probably be starting right after the, the first of the fiscal year. But he's moved right along with the project, though. The rest of it's moving along pretty well. So, the date of the financial summit, we're, we're talk, we've talked about the possibility of, of using June's, June 20th as a date. Um, that's in between your normal business, your business schedule, so, um, there'll be, there'll be three months, three meetings this, now, in the month of June, effectively. So, what I'd like to do, and have you give, and you can, don't have to communicate this to me tonight, but again, give this some thought, is to give us, give me some ideas as to what you'd like to see as part of the, the summit meeting. Um, I mean, we, we have some general ideas, but we don't wanna be the ones that, that sort of set this agenda. We'd like to have some feedback from you as well, so, um, if the, if you could actually provide me some feedback through an email, that'd be helpful.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, you know, I'd like to hear from some of the different departments of, you know, what they think, you know, would be, um, some cost-saving measures, uh, going forward.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, leave, leave it up to them to bring, to bring some ideas to the table.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
I think what's, um, what's important, too, is, is to talk about what has been done and what is being, what is actually in the works right now, because I thought a lot of people don't really fully understand all the things that have been done or in, or in the works right now to try and save money, but, but at the same token, I think it's good to have that, that 10,000-foot view of, well, let's think a little bit outside the box a little bit on some of these ideas. Maybe we can actually, you know, reduce costs in, in other areas as well. So, it's great to have this conversation. It's a very strategic discussion, which I really enjoy being part of, so, uh, but I think it's, uh, but it's important that we, we try and come up with an agenda that really makes sense for everyone.
I, I think it's also important to, to make sure that we are providing the services, the adequate services that the community wants, and if there's something that...
Mm-hmm.
...maybe isn't, isn't utilized towards fullest, you know, does it make sense to continue it? Does it make sense to, to look at, at, um, you know, maybe shifting funds wi, within the budget to something that is maybe, um, could be of greater benefit to the community, and maybe is, is not serving the, the community as a whole?
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Just kinda, you know, move, move the focus, just 'cause, oh, we've always done this, and that's the way we've done it. You know, we have a, you know, we gotta take a look at the demographics, too, and who, who we're trying to serve.
And, and there are other ways to provide it, too.
to something that is maybe, could be of greater benefit to the community, and maybe is, is not serving the, the community as a whole? You know what I mean? Just kinda, you know, move, move the focus, just 'cause, oh, we've always done this, and that's the way we've done it. You know, we have a, you know, we gotta take a look at the demographics, too, and who, who we're trying to serve.
And there are other ways to provide it, too. There's more talk of regionalization on lots of different fronts, so it's not just limited to, so it doesn't mean that the services go away, it would just be provided on a different level. And we're seeing that happen on, on many different levels now. Many, and in many different forums. All right, so that's the date that's been proposed. I suspect we'll use this room, same room, for the time, fine time being, and we'll invite the school committee, the advisory committee, and anyone else who wants, and the general public, and any of the, the departments who wanna present.
Is it gonna be just like a, like a strategy session, just kinda get ideas out there? What's the format gonna be?
Well, that's, that's, that's what I wanted to hear from you, from, I mean, what I, we have an, the expectation I would have is that, is to identify things that we should, we should be doing differently, so we can get the word out better about what we're doing. The one thing that became ultimately very clear to me during the budget process was that folks weren't fully aware of all the things that were being done and being discussed and presented, and so that, which resulted in a lot of questions. And, you know, we were all able to answer questions, but I think if we were able to find them in a forum where folks could really see them on a regular basis without having to have a special forum for it, I think it would be better to do that. So, ways we can provide that information is really important. I've been talking to Caitlin internally about the possibility of doing podcasts of, of different events that we, that we do. There's been talk about that possibly televised in the finance committee meetings, and I think more information we can provide to the public these days, the better it is, because everybody wants transparency, we wanna try, try to provide it for them. So I think that's been discussed, and still open for discussion, I guess, at some levels, but I think it's, those are the things that we gotta, we should put out there. All right. Then last but not least, tomorrow we have an important closing of, of, of a major thoroughfare in town. It's gonna occur around nine o'clock tomorrow morning on Route 140 near Cross Street, and this is being asked for through the courts, because apparently there was a fatality in and around that area that occurred, and the court is actually gonna, the jury's actually gonna come out and witness that area, so they actually, actually physically closed the road for a period of time. Police department's coordinating it, and they're working on it, but I just wanna, since we're on the air right now, I wanted to let people know that that area is gonna be somewhat impacted tomorrow morning between, around the hour of nine o'clock, so nine o'clock AM. So in case anybody is heading in that direction, you may wanna try and avoid that if possible.
So is it 140 that's being closed, or Cross Street?
It's 140 that's gonna be.
So if you're coming into town from 140, it's closed, they're gonna redirect it through Cross Street?
They're gonna redirect it, either redirect it, or they're gonna have to detour people around. Not sure how that's gonna happen, because it's not an easy way. It's a weird section of town.
Unless they can use Cross Street, or?
If they can.
Before that, there's no options.
Group one.
Yeah, that's the only other option before that, and then the other side.
So the, so maybe it's a detour ahead of that area that says, you know, don't go, if you, local traffic, you know, detour at Route 1 at Cross Street. So those are the things we're gonna think about. But it, this has happened rather quickly, so we're trying to coordinate and get the word out as quickly as we can. But we've already, we're gonna put the word out on, on Twitter and Facebook and all our various multi, uh, social media channels as well.
And that's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow morning, so, all right, so.
Can I just ask, could you make mention of the post-cane presentation that was done Monday?
Thank you. Yes, well, do you?
Claire Carter.
Thank you.
Want her to do it?
Yeah, actually, why don't you do that? Because I, I'll, I'll let that, I'll defer to Jenny and Jim on that, because we made a, a presentation yesterday that was extraordinary. We, we made a present to a, to a lady, a young lady in this community who was a hundred-plus years old, and she is now officially the, the oldest person recognized in the community that we know of. I mean, it could be others, but we, this is the one we know of. And so, as a result, she was a winner of the post-cane award, and we sent that to her yesterday. So, so Jim, we can take away from that.
Did it well.
No, no, I'm saying.
No, and thank you, Bill, Bill has come to the other ones as well. It interests me, because she basically says she follows, I think she's probably watching this meeting, she is completely up to date on what we do here.
Extraordinary lady.
She's been living in town for 50 years, phenomenally well-read, great sense of humor. And, and the post-cane is something that is entrusted to the selectmen all across New England. I think there's like 700 towns, dating back to 2009.
1909.
1909, yeah. So the selectmen presented to the oldest resident of the community, and it used to be just the oldest male, now it's male and female, it's switched over a while ago. So it was nice to see her family there, her sense of humor, giving it back to us a little bit on her humor.
That's right.
But it was nice, and Ginny did a nice job as well, and she ended a tour.
She's a remarkable woman. Her biography was incredible.
It is incredible.
And she's 101 years old, and she attends town meetings. And I think that in itself is a remarkable thing.
And she walked into the building. I mean, without, I mean, she has a cane, but, but she walked unassisted into the building, and where, that's not always been the case. We've seen another situation where folks have had to need assistance to get there. She walked unassisted into the building. She got two degrees, when she went back to college when she was 80 years old, and, and got two degrees, and, and, and two associate's degrees. So I, I'm just, I was amazed, quite honestly, and she was extremely well-read, extremely well, well-versed. And I, I, we asked her the question, I said, "How do you, how do you do this?" And she goes, "I eat good, I sleep good, I enjoy life."
You know, what was nice about her is she also, I mean, she was a Foxborough company employee for many years, but her community service was, was second to none, almost. The Walk for Hunger every year, the teaching English as a second language, working with seniors for programs, it just, it went on and on. And she was just a happy person, it was nice.
It was very nice.
Extraordinary lady.
It was a very nice, it was a very nice ceremony.
It was.
And you can read about it in Foxborough, quote un.
Yeah, they covered it, and did a nice job with that, so thank you. That's all I have.
Mary Beth?
Yeah, a few updates for the board. We began the official process of health insurance negotiations with the Public Employee Committee, which is comprised of the town and school unions, as well as managers, Bill Yupin representing the school, and Bill Keegan, Randy, and myself representing the town. We kicked it off at our first official meeting on May 11th. We're scheduled for another meeting, May 23rd. We're hoping to find agreement in the near, very near few weeks. June 10th is our 30-day deadline, so I'll, I'll report back on what we're, what we've decided. It's basically two prongs. One is plan design, to meet the benchmark of the GIC plan, because we adopted section 21 through 23 of chapter 32B. And the other one is to decide what to do with the mitigation, so it requires that the town share 25% of the savings, the first-year savings, with the employees, and it's deciding whether, in what way that they would like that to be shared. So those are the two biggest points that we'll be discussing, and it went very well, and we're looking forward to a productive session on the 23rd. Next, we, Bill is the chair of the new SEMREC board, which is our southeastern Massachusetts Regional Emergency Communication Center. So as you know, four towns signed an agreement to enter into a regional dispatch, and I've been the point person working with the committee to recruit the SEMREC's first-ever executive director. So we've met over a course of weeks, and I'm gonna share the brochure with you, in case you know anybody. The posting went live on May 15th, and the four communities are working together. We're actually hosting the posting on our town of Foxborough website. We've created a department called SEMREC on our Foxborough page, and this is the recruitment brochure that reflects that position. So it'll be open until June 15th. Anybody interested in the executive director position, please see our website. It's also going on multiple public safety websites, the MMA, and then some free posting with Glassdoor, Indude, and LinkUp. So take a look at that.
If I can just introduce for one second, Mary Beth, one thing I did wanna point out to the board is that this Friday, I signed the actual grant application for the SEMREC, for the first, for the first funding of the SEMREC. It was a $5 million request. We think that our chances are favorable, but we're gonna, we're not gonna take that lightly. We're gonna, we're gonna push hard to get those, those funds in place. But I wanna thank the entire, entire committee, and the working group, made up of all the chiefs, and fire chiefs, and police chiefs, and deputy chiefs, who were just worked extremely hard, and the, and the application was tremendous. So I'm really, really grateful for, and, and I'm really proud to serve with these guys. This is a, a really good undertaking. They're covering every possible issue I can see, see at this point. It's, they're very consistent, they're about meeting, they're, they're passionate about getting it done right, and, and setting a new standard for, for, for this process. So I'm really, really pleased to be part of that process.
I agree. Same with my subcommittee, I'm thrilled, the productivity and the cooperation. I have two fire chiefs and two police chiefs on my committee working on this recruitment, and the grant will fund, if the grant is received, it'll fund the executive director's position. So we're going forward with that, and special thanks to Caitlin, who put together our website, and Marcia, who's assisting with issuing the RFP for the assessment center. We're pretty much using the timeline and the process that we used for our police chief search, almost mirroring it almost exactly, and we felt that was pretty successful, so we're gonna do the same thing. Speaking of job postings, with the approval of the budget at town meeting, there are a couple of positions that were approved as part of the budget. There's a 19-hour Council on Aging Human Services office position that we've posted on our website as of yesterday. Tomorrow, I believe, the Public Works full-time highway position will be posted, and then at the end of the week, the administrative assistant assessor position is going from part-time to a full-time. So those will be posted on our website, if anybody's interested. We're in the process of interviews for a replacement position in the Board of Health. We're interviewing tomorrow, and then we'll be screening resumes for the IT Business Analyst position, which is a combined town-school position that was replacing our Financial Analyst position. So a lot happening, all the seasonal applications are in for recreation. We're in the process of doing the paperwork on a DPW seasonal employee, so it's just generally a very busy time right now. And this week will kick off the performance evaluation process for all of the groups that we negotiated in performance evals, so fire, DPW, dispatchers, non-union. Those are all gonna be in process, May 15th to June 15th, and...
Who's, who's responsible for doing the performance reviews? The department heads, or the?
The direct supervisor with the department head signing off, and sometimes depending on the structure sitting in.
Do they, do they know how important those are, as, as we can see earlier?
We've got traded with them as well.
Yeah, as we rolled out performance evals, I've met with the supervisory group of each union and done a training on how to do it, given them some of the books and resources that I have, that they can borrow for the language to use for writing goals and all of that. And we have a really good exchange, so they will check with us on if they have questions. And then the stuff, it gets on fi, it's on file with us, and we have a copy, and we're building personnel files, and the paperwork gets submitted for an increase if it's warranted.
People will find that to be a useful process, in many ways.
Yeah, it, it's been very successful. And final thing, I just wanted to let you know that we could, at 5:30 today, we met with the Personnel Board, and in the last quarter, since we've been in front of you last time, we've come up with three new town policies that we wanna present to you. I'm gonna give them, distribute them to you on Board Docs next meeting, and then on the June 13th meeting, we'll actually present, come here and talk to you about them. So one is a social media policy, one is a workplace violence policy, and the third is code of conduct civility policy. So all three of those never existed, and we're going to roll those out to you for your adoption. You'll have a couple of weeks to look at them.
A few months ago, an issue came up in regard to vehicle, and you said you were gonna revisit the municipal vehicle policy?
Right, we need to, that's one of the things, we need to revisit that one.
Okay.
Okay, because we got, we need to get that finished.
We, so after these three are done, that's our next round, are all revision policies. These will be the three new recruited.
There's a list of revision policies that still need to get done.
Yeah, but definitely we'll put that one on there.
That was just revised, I think, about two years ago, so.
I think last year we adopted it. But you have to revisit them once a year.
Right.
So, all right, that's all I have.
Okay, Action Adams?
Just one quick comment on the June 20th meeting coming up.
Sure.
In 30 seconds.
Go ahead.
So, talking about the, the summit, the financial summit. Interestingly enough, I mean, if you look at our town meeting, you know, we had a $70 million budget, and I think one gentleman had a question on it that was all of a minute, and it was answered, passed without a lot of discussion. Throw in a, "The town hit your mailbox, what happens?" item, and I think we spent 40 minutes on it. I think generally people are comfortable around the areas that they understand, so I'm hoping that the summit that we have is not, you know, to the third decimal point.
Right.
Because to pick up that budget and understand it is more than a summit in an hour. If we can focus on, I'm not using these words, 'cause I think I'm in the same group as dumbing it, dumbing it down a little bit, so you don't need to pick up the finance book and study it for a week to participate, and let the residents know that, you know, you get more information if people understand it and are comfortable. So part of that is for the residents to, you know, "I've got three little kids, I want kindergarten," or "I'm retired," or just general discussion.
Fair enough, yeah, that's a fair point.
That the department heads are there, and then there can be some give and take, without making people feel intimidated, because it's, it's, the budget is daunting unless you're a finance wizard and spend time on it.
So it's breaking it down, so it's more understandable.
It's...
Or, or just when we're, we're selling it and getting people to come, that it's a, it's a time, not so much for the department heads to justify their spending, but understanding what services we need, what we don't need.
What do we provide, and what we haven't provided.
What we're expecting, and what the shortcomings are, so people can listen and, you know, someone from the planning board can respond, or a DPW director. 'Cause I think sometimes that information is more important than talking about spreadsheets for three days.
This is something that I'm actually reaching out to some of my colleagues in other communities, where they do similar types of, of presentations, and they, and I've seen how they present, and it's, it's much, a much easier format to present, so I'm asking for their advice in, in how we can actually try and structure this meeting. So, 'cause I, I've done things a certain way for, for years, and I've done, I've switched it and done it in different ways, but I'm always open to seeing new ways that people present it, and it really makes sense, because, you know, at the end of the day, you're absolutely right, Jim, and people want, if people, it, it's interesting, when you go to a, a town meeting, and there's, and there's a discussion about $20,000, you may spend an hour discussing $20,000, but they'll, they'll spend five seconds on $70 million, because people just don't understand it. And that's not, that's not a criticism, that's just a reality. So I think, you know, if, if we can present, present a, a big number like that in a way that people really feel comfortable voting on it without any kind of real remorse or concern about it, that's better for all of us. I mean, I, 'cause I don't feel comfortable in a situation where people are saying to me, "I didn't get there, so I just, I just voted for it." I'd rather have you be comfortable voting on something you really get, and, and it's just better for all of us when that happens. So that's the goal. I mean, that's, that's my goal, anyways.
Yeah, and we, we tried this before, a number of years back, and it was a Saturday morning.
Yeah.
And I think two people came.
Yeah.
So it's, you don't wanna keep trying it, and nobody showed up, so some thought to that.
We're gonna televise it, right?
Yeah.
We're gonna have it here, so that's, that's gonna be a, be a plus. It's gonna be done in a week, right?
Right.
Tuesday night?
Tuesday night.
A regular night.
Can I just make a comment about town meeting? We had the, one of the Warren articles was multiple pages, it was a storm, stormwater bylaw article. And there was a question, a lady came up to the microphone and asked, "Has anybody read this?" And I just wanted to mention that the function of the advisory committee is to read all the Warren articles and ask the questions. And that's why they're sitting at, on the other side of the stage from the, from the selectmen, and that's why they present the Warren articles. They have done, they have done the homework. Everybody, everybody can't, you know, go, go to an AdCon meeting, leave their homes and, and ask questions. AdCon members ask the questions that you would ask if you read this Warren article the first time and said, "What does this mean?", and then you start asking questions. That's the function of the advisory committee. It's a very, very important board, and...
They serve as the arm of town meeting, basically.
And, and you know, and I wish before a town meeting, it, their function could be explained, especially to people new to town meeting.
That's a good point.
You know?
That's a good point.
'Cause they make their recommendations.
They serve as the explanation of, arm of the, of these studies, arm of, of town meeting, if you will.
That might be a, a, a good lead-in, the budget summit, you know, the functions of the different department heads, and the different boards and committees, you know, what, what their role is.
And just a, just a simple explanation that the process for budgets is a five- or six-month process.
Right.
It's not something that we just thought up a, a week ago and presented it. It takes months to present that final document. So, I, I think, I don't think there's a full understanding of that, I think we wanna try and get to that point.
Right, and, and just to let the audience know, the advisory committee members ask very good questions.
They do, they do.
They really do, so.
So, okay. Action Adams?
All right. Move to approve the 2017 Memorial Day celebration on Monday, May 29th, 2017, for veteran services.
Second, what you made second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve to locate, install, and maintain manhole, manholes, ducts, and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary along the public ways of Lewis Road, Twilight Drive, and Morningside Lane for National Grid.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Move to approve to relocate one jointly-owned pole, T dot 30 dash E dot 51, to a point on the northerly side of Chestnut Street, and to relocate one jointly-owned pole, T dot 29 dash E dot 52, to a point on the southerly side of Chestnut Street for Verizon Wireless.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, so people understand what T dot and E dot means. T is for telephone, E is for electric. And what happens when they say jointly-owned, what happens is that there are only two really, really owners, real owners of the poles. It's the electric company or the telephone company. Sometimes they jointly own them, and so they clarify them with these designations.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the extension of liquor license hours to begin at 10:00 AM Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championship Games for Bar Louie.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the extension of liquor license hours to begin at 10:00 AM on Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championship Games for Splitsville and Howl at the Moon.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the extension of liquor license hours to begin at 10:00 AM on Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championship Games for the Renaissance Boston Patriot Place Hotel.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the extension of liquor license hours to begin at 10:00 AM on Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championship Games for Skip Jacks.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the extension of liquor license hours to begin at 10:00 AM on Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championship Games for CBS Scene Restaurant and Bar.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the extension of liquor license hours to begin at 10:00 AM on Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championship Games for Better Foods Foxborough LLC Tabalinos.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept, move to approve the extension of liquor license hours to begin at 10:00 AM on Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championship Games for Foxborough LLC Toby Keith's I Love This Bar and Grill.
Second. 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 Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. With there, before we continue on with the rest, did I get an email that there were more?
There's a few. It's at the very end.
At the end, the additional ones.
They're online at the end.
There are a few.
Oh, they're not on the paperwork?
I didn't put them on the agenda.
Okay. So I'll get to those in a second. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $300 for the museum pass gift fund from the Foxborough Lions Club to the Boydin Library.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $150 from the Rhododendron Needlers Quilt Guild of Wall Pole to the Boydin Library.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $2,500 for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Foxborough Never Forgets Incorporated to Veteran Services.
I'll second it. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Just for the record, I'm gonna recruit, recruise myself from the vote. Thank you to Foxborough Never Forgets Inc. for their generous donation. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $150 for a history lecture from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors to the Council on Aging.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $600 to fund three lectures by Scholar in March and Entertainment for the '90s Birthday Party from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors to the Council on Aging.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $690 for partial payments for programs as agreed at the Council on Aging and Human Services from the Friends of Foxborough to the Council on Human Services.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $725 to pay for programs from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors to the Council on Aging.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $400 as a sponsor for the movie Under the Stars from Personal Best Karate to the Recreation Department.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of 2/7/17.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to accept the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of 2/21/17.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve additional extension of liquor license hours. Should we do those individually, or should we do them as a group, like the others?
Do them individually.
Okay. Move to approve an extension of liquor license hours to begin at 10:00 AM on Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Championships for Saga Steakhouse.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the extension of liquor license hours to begin at 10:00 AM on Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championship Games for Davio's Northern Italian Steakhouse.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the extension of liquor license hours to begin at 11:00 AM on Sunday, May 28th, 2017, for the NCAA Lacrosse Championships for Gillette Stadium.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. That's it.
That's it?
Yep. So we will adjourn from the public session and reconvene in executive session...
After.
After we hear from her.
Thank you, David. Quick, could I get a, could I just get a look at that, the declaration?
Oh, declaration?
Of Timolte?
Sure. You want to take a picture of it?
Yes, exactly. Thank you. Also, yeah, if you, if you could, yeah.
You can have this, I see it, do you want?
Thank you.
We can take the sticky note off.
Well, the, this is the, this is the...
That's the Declaration of the Senate.
The Declaration of the Mountain is a proclamation.
That's the proclamation.
It's good to know, because we can stick sticky notes.
I actually think I have a blank copy of that.
I do.
Review now, Foxborough reporter, for those who do not know me on the camera. But yeah, I guess just, do you guys have any further thoughts about why you decided to give Timolte a citation?
Because he's been good.
Excellent. Very good.
We'll miss him.
For a long period of time.
Very good.
Actually, he does come to a lot of the Foxborough functions, and they're on Saturdays, Sundays nights. And I know he's got young kids, so...
Excellent.
The time that he spends away from his family on Foxborough is duly noted.
Perfect.
Appreciated.
Man, I've seen his young kids come with him to the function, so...
Yeah. Actually, they marched in one of the Founders' Day parade, too.
Perfect. Great.
And I'm throwing out candy.
Yep.
Excellent. Well, that's about all for this time. I will see you all later. Have a good executive session.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Move to adjourn public meeting.
I think you, because you're going in for a different session at this, you should also notify, you should declare that.
Yeah. I don't know if we had to do them separately.
You're going, you're going, you're rejourning back into executive session for the initial purpose, and then you're also adding an additional purpose as well, so you might want to declare the second purpose.
Okay. Move to adjourn public meeting and to go back into executive session to approve the executive session minutes and to discuss town manager's contract.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion?
And don't we have to come out?
Into adjourn, into adjourn, into, into, and to not readjourn an open session. Right. You're not going to readjourn after that, right?
Right, but we have to adjourn our meeting after executive session. So you come out of executive session for the sole purpose of adjourning regular session.
I'm confused.
I know.
So I'll defer to you. I just, I shouldn't have done it the other way.
How do we get out?
Not to readjourn into open session.
First.
Yeah. Well, that's, isn't that the motion you made?
Yeah.
The meeting has to be declared in open session. And then, and then you, so you adjourn into executive session, and you can say it's part of the motion not to readjourn into open session.
Oh.
amend your motion.
You can do that way.
Whatever.
To not...
Okay. So, say it again.
So the purpose of the meeting is, the purpose of the meeting is to, is to approve, is to approve the executive session minutes and to discuss strategy relating to the town manager's contract. I want to be clear about that. And then also, and that, and that the board will not readjourn into open session following the conclusion of that executive session.
Perfect. So more.
What he's...
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm leaving.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.